Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Law 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press in the Beacon and was posted on a bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. For welcome, please rise this to the plate.
In the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, Resolution 2020-253 authorizing the promotion of a sergeant.
Resolution to County Police Department, New Jersey, promoting Michael Verway to the position of police sergeant for the Lacy Township Police Department. Motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Perutolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Cass?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to call Chief Devella up to the front.
Thank you Veronica, committee. Welcome everybody here this evening. It's a very special moment for Lacy Township Police Department. We had an honor of privilege to watch one of our seasoned police officers, Officer Michael Verway, get promoted to the rank of police sergeant. Before I call Mike up, there's just a couple of things. For those of you that normally follow our police department promotions, you're probably used to seeing walls of blue here. Based on amended decisions today, based on the increase in COVID-19 cases, the abundance of caution and public safety, having all of our police officers here packed into rooms this evening really wasn't a good idea. But I can assure you that I also support Officer Michael Verway. And second, I'd also like to thank Veronica and the entire governing body for their support of Officer Verway's promotion. And with that, I'll call Officer Verway over here. Officer Michael Verway is a 16-year law enforcement veteran. He was hired by the Lacy Township Police Department in 2013. Prior to coming to our police department, he was a police officer in the Medford Police Department and the Burlington City Police Department. Since 2013, Officer Verway has been assigned to a patrol division. He's a very proactive police officer. He's a member of the Ocean County Regional SWAT team. He's a member of our fatal accident support team, and he's one of our field training officers, our FTO meetings. When we hired new police officers, when they come out of the police academy, we assigned them to Officer Verway for a few months to be trained. So he brings a lot to the police department for us. Officer Verway is a graduate of Donovan Capital. He holds a bachelor's degree in public administration from Fairleigh Dickinson University. Officer Verway is a resident of Lacy Township. I have his eyes there with his wife Lindsay, and he has three kids, Amber, Amila, and Wyatt. Upon his promotion, Officer Verway will be assigned as a supervisor for our patrol division, where I know he's going to bring good things to the Lacy Township Police Department. He's certainly the future of the Lacy Township Police Department. Very proud to stand here tonight to watch his promotion. Well deserved, Officer Verway, and congratulations.
Would you like to come up and help a bow? It's on your right hand and left hand on the bow. Just repeat after me. I am Michael Verway.
I am Michael Verway.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully,
That I will faithfully,
impartially,
Impartially,
and justly,
And justly,
perform all the duties of police sergeant,
Perform all the duties of police sergeant.
according to the best of my ability,
According to the best of my ability.
and that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
And I will support the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,
and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey,
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same,
and to the government established in the United States and in this state,
and to the government established in the United States and in this state,
under the authority of peoples so help me God.
Under the authority of peoples so help me God.
Congratulations.
Michael, if you're getting that right, buddy. Getting that right on the money.
Now it's official.
That's right.
Peter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let's say a couple of words. I first met Officer, now Sergeant, Verway under some pretty uncomfortable circumstances. I was new on committee. He was a new police officer. I suffered a break-in in my vehicle, had something stolen, my wife was shaken up, my daughter was very young at the time, and Officer Verway was the man that was dispatched to my home, sat in my dining room, was very, very professional. Everything that was stolen was recovered. It was a rather convicted criminal that did this. And, you know, since then, I really appreciated it. You know, Sergeant Verway is a good leader. He's highly respected in our department, has a fine family, and I just wish you the very, very best. I mean, I had that interaction with you many, many years ago, and I'm sure you remember it. And I really, really appreciated it since then. I appreciate all our officers, but in particular, I wish you the very, very best. I hope you're safe. It's very difficult being a police officer these days, and we say this, I hope God walks with you, and thanks for everything, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Sergeant Verway, you know how I feel. Congratulations. Well deserved. I know you've been a member of this police department for a long time, and there's only good things in the future for you. I only say this to you. Your family should be real proud of you. When I seen you in that uniform, I break down sometimes because it means a lot to me. And I just want to make sure you stay safe out there. Keep everybody. You've got good leadership, and you all work together. I want to thank you for everything you've done and look to do in the future for our town. I really do, from the bottom of my heart. And you keep us safe, and keep yourself safe. So thank you, and to your family. Congratulations. He's a fine gentleman. He's a fine police officer. He's one of the best. I love him.
Sergeant, so I remember when you were hired, and I heard good things. Heard good things that, you know, listen, we want to add to our police force as much as we can. I remember when you were hired, it was, you know, it was like every time, everything we do. This year is a reflection of it. We wanted to do hires, we wanted to do promotions, and unfortunately we didn't have the money. But I want to digress a little bit. So it's No Shade November, and I see you didn't, but you look really good.
You saw the moustache, right? You would understand.
Okay. But, okay, so I'll get back to being serious, but really. You know, it's nice from the chief's standpoint that as we trade personnel and they retire, that he has good personnel to draw from. And I know from what he said and what I've heard, you're one of those good personnel. So I want to congratulate you, and as Committee Member Juliana said, really stay safe, you know. Keep on doing what you're doing. We've got great professionals in our police force. You hear about horror stories out there, and I'm confident we won't have that because the training and the caliber of individuals we have. So best of luck. Best luck to your gorgeous family, and see you in the future.
Sergeant Verway, this is nine months overdue. Because had COVID not hit, this would have been done back in March. So you are a casualty of COVID.
All right.
But it is, it finally came to fruition. I hear nothing but great things about you. Nothing but great things. And you're one of the reasons we can sleep at night. So thank you, and give God bless your family.
It's No Shade November. Are you doing it?
Yes, he is.
That's the best you can do?
It's like it's two days.
Sergeant Verway, it's an honor to have you as part of Lacy Township Police Department. Congratulations on your promotion, and we truly wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
You shake mine, man.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You've got to actually sign it. Yep, make it official.
Sorry, sir.
So you're all free to leave if you would like to leave at this moment before we continue in business.
I mean, it's really exciting, but...
They have other places to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's the good stuff. There's that smile. There's that smile. There's that smile.
Item three, Holtech litigation update. Mr. Dasty.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a blue wave we can all get behind, right? My name is Jerry Dasty. I assist Senator Connors in the Township Attorney's Office. And I was asked by the committee, I'm handling the matters that involve Holtech, litigation matters, and I don't know which way to, but I think the committee's probably, committee's probably heard most of this. I was asked to come and try to give an update to everyone here and perhaps to the public later in the week as to where we are with the Holtech matters. We are involved in three different lawsuits, three different courts with Holtech. Just a little bit of history lesson quickly, and then we can see where we are from here. I think April or May or so, it was discovered that, at least in our opinion, Holtech was built doing things on the site out there without proper permits. And a stop work order was issued by our township department, the building department. That stop work order was appealed by Holtech to the construction, the county construction board of appeals. But the stop order is still in effect. The hearing before the construction board of appeals awaits these other cases. Notwithstanding the fact that the stop work order is still in effect, Holtech just kept on going. So we were directed by the committee to go to Superior Court and have a judge order them to stop. And after we started the lawsuit, we had meetings with attorneys for Holtech, and eventually there was an order entered saying they can't do any more work unless they get building permits, which would have required them to come to the planning or the zoning board to get the approvals. It's the exact same, now this is all involving, of course, decommissioning and the storage of the dry rods on site, above ground. What's being done now by Holtech in terms of the dry rods, although it may be one heck of a lot more dry rods, the same thing that JC P&L did 20 or 25 years in the 90s, and the same thing Exelon did 20 years ago, when they had to store the dry rods. They came to the planning board, the zoning board, they got the approvals, they got the permits, and then they did what they wanted to do. Holtech hasn't done that. So as a result of the order entered, they're not allowed to do that unless until they go to the planning board and get approvals. I'm sure you all know by now, they went to the planning board in, I think, August, and the planning board unanimously denied the application because of, well, the resolution speaks for itself. Terry Brady is the attorney for the planning board. I don't want to speak for him, but they felt that, the planning board felt there was not sufficient proof provided by Holtech to grant the site plan. Holtech then started two more lawsuits. They appealed that lawsuit, they appealed the planning board decision to the Superior Court Law Division, Tom Girbert. Mr. Brady's handling the planning board case, and that, of course, is still pending. Holtech also started suit in federal district court, naming both the planning board and the township as defendants. That case is totally not. They went in for, Holtech went in for a temporary restraining order, trying to restrain the township from doing what we're doing. That order was denied. The judge denied their request to have an interim emergency order to have the town stop what we're doing. So it seems to me right now we're doing okay. We have more hearings coming up with federal district court judge on December 1st. Obviously, we have a meeting in about a week and a half with Judge Hodgson in the Chancery Division matter, the 23rd, I think it is. And Mr. Brady, of course, is continuing to represent the township, the planning board, actually, in Tom Girbert Law Division matter. I don't want to speak for the five committee people. They certainly can speak for themselves. Everybody Lacy Township wants this plant to be decommissioned safely, and hopefully have a future that can benefit the township, the taxpayers, and everybody else. It's just that, in our opinion, at least Holtech seems to want to bypass certain requirements to get themselves to the finish line faster than we think it's appropriate. So township is, the committee's fully supportive of what we're doing. I don't want to single out any one of them. They've all been wonderful, but I'd all get myself in trouble. I want to especially thank Committee Member Dykoff, he was with us the other day. We had a Zoom meeting with Judge Hodgson. Mark slipped me a couple of pieces of paper. I was very helpful today. Thank you. And Tim McDonald, who I'm known for, his son and my son are about five years old, has been helpful to me in terms of community support, in terms of text messages, and also he gets a lot of this atomic energy literature, which is sent to me, which is very helpful. And the rest of the committee, I know I'm going to have two or three people mad at me, but they're all very, very helpful. I just want to mention those two because recently, they've been really jumping to the forefront. Mayor, I'll answer any questions you want, or if you don't, and you may or may not want to mention what we're doing next week. It's up to you.
I'll just talk about that later in our comments.
You want to mention that it's coming or no?
I'll mention it.
Okay. Mayor, that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Dasty, thank you so much. Thank you.
Item four, best practices inventory submission.
As required by the Division of Local Government Services, I am to submit to you our submissions of best practices that myself and the CFO have answered and submitted to the state of New Jersey. Based on our answers, we did not lose any of our state aid or energy tax receipts, as I call it, in our funding. We are able to maintain at the level one, so we didn't lose any funding.
Well done. Item five, special use permit, CBD Wellness Center Holiday Event, December 13, 2020.
CBD Wellness Center, which is on Route 9 at Lakeside Drive, they are looking to have an outdoor event on 10 to 4 on December 13th. It has been reviewed by the zoning office. I just need permission to authorize the special use permit. Motion?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Requesting post sign is Lacy Private Forest, November 22nd, November 28th, December 20th, December 26th.
Lacy Private's going through their registration period. They would like to post the long signs throughout the community. Since it's not allowed under our ordinance, we need to give them, since they're nonprofit, permission to do so. Can I have a motion?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I have no add-on here?
I was just going to talk, just do the... Well, so I don't know if you want to talk about it. And so I spent, went down to Bayfront Park, toured Bayfront Park from our last meeting, and that would be my recommendation. So basically, the residents there sort of don't want to take care of their own property. I guess that's the best way to say it, sort of. And my recommendation would be that the homeowners, if they do not want the grass cut, to put a sign up that says, please do not cut the grass. That would be my recommendation. I know, you'd have to sort of see the, talk in very small areas. I know the near house, I know you just want, you know, have sand run, you know, run out of sand. So I don't object to anything that's sort of going on there. Such, they're such small portions of property that I think that the DPW guys would mind not taking care of them.
Are we permitted to put...
This is my recommendation. That's all I said. I have four other people up here.
Are we, are the others only permitted to put plants of a choice of...
I would say, I would say, you don't want, I know you don't want your property cut. So that, I mean, my recommendation is to just, I'm going to tell you what you can or can't do. My recommendation is put a sign that says, please do not cut the grass.
Steve's asking if she can plant flowers.
She would have to post a sign then.
I would say post, I mean, I don't object to it. I don't want to speak for everybody. Again, I walked it two Sundays ago, or three Sundays ago, stopped at your house, you weren't there. And that would be my recommendation.
So if Mrs. Berkowitz could, she could post a sign that says, do not cut in this area, and she could put some of those bay roses, all of that back in the area?
That would be my recommendation.
And if other, if other, if anyone just wanted to have the grass, you know...
You're, you're a different case. I know you have sort of a sea turtle bed there.
So you're looking to basically remove the grass or let it go back to some of the basic sand. As long as we're not in violation of our permit, nobody's going to turn us into the DEP. The only time they turn us into the DEP is obviously when we mow the grass during...
The DDP person.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't see why they would have a problem with that. I guess we'll take our chances with the DEP.
You'd have to see, the large portion of the park area would be cut. You're talking very small areas behind these houses, because that's why, it's not, I don't think it's a burden, but I think so, for the town or the... So that would be my recommendation.
What are you talking about?
Bayfront Park. We have...
You know about Fort River Beach?
Yes, yes, Bayfront Park.
Okay, so some people want the lawn road and some people don't?
You're coming up to the mic.
There's a certain, all right, so in, right behind their houses is obviously the township park. And there's a portion, based on our permit approvals that we received, we're not allowed to mow the grass during a certain period of time in the summer. I believe it's May 1st through October 15th.
Right.
And there are, for the turtle habitat. So there are some residents that behind their houses have, did some plantings, beach roses, yucca plants, so on and so forth, that they've been maintaining on their own.
On their property?
Yes, all the way at the end by Inland Drive, the furthest entrance by Bayside Beach Club. And then these residents live more on the curve there, and they would like to turn that more into having some sand there so that the turtles could have a habitat to lay their eggs and to, you know, have them go back into the water. So we usually, the grass gets very high during that May through October period, sometimes over four feet high, and it does then create issues with mosquitoes and some varmints and stuff like that. So they would like to turn that back into more of a beach sand so that the turtles have a more natural area to put their eggs and stuff.
Okay.
So we're going to let them maintain those small areas.
I've been a resident there at Fort River Beach since 1979. Many years ago, yes, there were sea turtles coming up. You all know Pearl has...
Just state your name and address.
Nadia Steen, 1510 Beach Boulevard. Through out time, there has been erosion. You, once upon a time, used to have sand. Through time, the sand has disappeared. When there was sand, yes, there was turtles. The sand has eroded through time. The township has taken over the property. You had tried to turn it into a park. Then you guys did the rip rap with the stones, so many feet from the shoreline. Through, so through time, that eroded, and now it's nothing but rocks all the way around. And now you build a new park, and there's more rocks. Turtles are not going to cross over rocks because they can't find the sand. And I can tell you that because I have the last property that has the repairing rights to the water. I am right on the line of the township property. I have nothing but rocks that have washed up in front of my home from the township's rocks. Sandystorm, yes, did not help. I do not even grow beach sand anymore because of the changes. I also have a neighbor who decided to put railroad ties under his fence to block the natural wind blowing the beach sand to my property because he has an in-ground pool, and he doesn't have to have it fenced in all the way around like everybody else because he lives on the water, so he's allowed to have a chain link fence into the water. So he's concerned about little dogs going underneath the fence, so he put railroad ties that has stopped me from getting beach sand. So through these years now, being that my beach is not even a beach anymore, it's all rocks and seaweed that wash up. Seaweed gets caught in the cove of the Fort River Beach and my property. There has been no turtles. Turtles will only lay eggs in sand, and they will only walk up when they find sand. They cannot find sand around that entire property because there is no sand. It's all rocks. And they are sure not going to say, oop, there's the blue tube, let me go through it because then I'll find your sanctuary, turtle sanctuary. That is a disgrace. First of all, the township has machines. They're too big. They can't do a complete circle around it to mow it. They will not go and weed whack it. So yes, along the township property line in my property, yes, I have four-foot weeds to galore. And I have those reeds that are filled along that fence, and they eventually grow into my property, and then they attack my above-ground pool, and then damage the line and put a hole in it. I try to be conservative, not use pesticides, weed killers. I try to go organic, natural as much as possible. Okay? That turtle sanctuary does not have turtles. That's a cat litter box. It's filled with weeds. It's filled with reeds that are now growing and filling it in. That thing has not been taken care of at all. Now you get permission to mow the lawn in October, and again, the machine only goes so far, so they haven't even cut to the fence. They haven't cut up the fence, and it's a mess. It looks sloppy. I'm not a complainer. I keep quiet a lot. But yes, this turtle thing and not being able to mow the lawn, I think is ridiculous.
So this is, this is...
There's, there has not been turtles.
So now, so did you...
I feel that the lawn, the whole property should have been mowed all year long.
So the last couple of meetings with other residents here, they had pictures, they had pictures of turtles on their property in a sand bed. We're not talking about the larger portion of the park. That grass will remain getting cut. That's too big. But the portions of property that we're talking about are the small portions along the walking path. And so this resident wants to plant flowers there, and she was upset the last meeting because the town, which fully just mowed all the flowers down. So the resident there had a, has a sand bed where they have pictures of sea turtles there. So they're just asking to not, basically not cut, not have the, not have the sand bed cut with turtles in it, and she doesn't want her flowers cut by the homeowners. The rest of the park will be maintained. It will be cut as in accordance with the DEP permit. As to the turtle beds that are in the, you know, closer to the park, the bigger ones that the township put in, that was by DEP. We had to put them in. Whether there's turtles there or not is beside the point. We had to put them in in order to get the permit.
Can you move it over so the guys can actually mow around it?
We cannot do anything to the parks. We are, as it sits, we are not allowed to touch anything. We have to follow the guidelines as per the DEP. We can't change anything there without modifying the permit.
So you can't move the turtle sanctuary two feet away from the fence line, or these guys come with weed whackers or something to mow, to cut along there?
We cannot change anything pertaining to the park because it affects our DEP. We can't do any. That's why we have to cut from October, what is it, October 1st to, I don't know.
Can't cut from June 1st.
They first through October 15th.
I have seen it. Can they come and cut a better way around the sanctuary and along the fence line?
Can they cut it better?
Yes, like instead of using a piece of riding machinery, could they get out and use a weed whacker? Yes, we could look into that.
Yeah, that's something we could, yeah, we could probably have that. Yes.
Because, like I said, that turtle sanctuary is way too close. It does not look right at all. I'm sorry. I was hoping to find the picture so you could see what I'm talking about. No, anyway, it's okay. I'll take it, I'll take it to...
So you're saying there's a narrow path or swath of property there that the machine's not able to get into?
No.
So, yeah, so what I'll do is I'll take a ride down there with our Director of Public Works. We'll take a walk through, we'll look at it. We'll have those areas addressed. So when you come into the park, it's off to the left behind the turtle sign. Okay?
You have a house in a house. You have a fence. So you have a house in a house, you have a fence, you know, the fence like this. And in front of this house has the sanctuary. And the mower only comes to a certain point and stops.
Okay.
Because it can't fit to the corner.
Gotcha.
And it can't go all the way up.
Gotcha. Okay, I'll, I'll take a look, I'll take, I'll take a ride with the Director of Public Works and we'll do a walkthrough and I'll explain it all to them.
Right. And, and the reeds are just, you know, grown and I know there's a certain time you're allowed to cut them and you can't cut them. Now's the time to cut them because they're overgrown and they're, they're crazy. I mean, I don't know, you know, where the root of it is, but they're nice and they're not nice. But, you know, they, I have to cut in the ground so that it doesn't keep going to.
It's kind of like bamboo almost.
I don't mind it, it, it grows down at the deep, I don't mind it. But, you know, it's coming because of the fence line, it's just growing and coming at.
Okay. Alright, we'll take a look at it, not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. Just clarify for me, because I may have been under the wrong impression. Wasn't there an adjustment made to the agreement with the DEP that the north end of the park could be mowed year round?
No, the, the way that the map shows, it's highlighted where we can mow. And off the top of my head, I don't have the pictures here with me.
I thought where the, where the playground is, I thought there was a, an adjustment made.
But she's talking behind the turtle garden there that's adjacent to the fence.
Which is at the north end of the park.
Yeah, but, but what she's saying is that while they do mow it, the mower can't get into that area, so could we send somebody with a weed whacker?
Right, but, but there they can cut year round.
I believe that area can be cut year round.
Just wanted to clarify that. And to clarify for others, okay.
Yeah, it's the stuff further out by the water and then the walkway area.
Right, the south end of the park, before the new playground was put in and the walking path was put in, that was fully sand and the turtles nested there on a regular basis. I have videos of turtles nesting in that area. The dirt, turtles still do come up, but some of them are coming out of the marshes where they also nest and trying to make their way back to the water. So that's why you see some of them showing up, that they nest over in the, in the marshland on the other side of, like when you come over the bridge or whatever. So that's why there are turtles showing up, but there's no way that they're going to nest on what's there now because it's way too hard for them to, to nest in that area. So it was a, a nesting area of the terrapin turtles. And now it, you know, there's very, very little that they're able to do there. Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Darlene Berkowitz, sixteen eighteen. Is it going to be a uniform sign that everybody has who wants to keep the greenery? So that it doesn't start to look like.
Does anybody, so.
Furthermore, we have to make sure the committees all in agreement with this concept. How's that?
So if anybody could weigh in as a one, that was the way I could split the park in half.
I mean, has everybody on board that we handle it this way? I, I mean, before we move forward and, you know, have the residents post any signs and stuff like that?
I guess the only question I have is, I think this was hard because there was a property that wasn't being mowed and it was creating, not a hazard, but an unsightly or unpleasant, so.
But that should be, again, my, that should, then that, then that property should be cut, like if they're just.
But, but you're saying no, if the customer, if that resident, that resident doesn't want it cut, it doesn't have to be cut.
Well, it, it.
Yeah, that's my record.
As to that, the vegetation in different areas of town, there is such things as natural vegetation, wildflowers, so on and so forth. And we run into this a lot with code enforcement when he goes out to somebody, somebody calls in a complaint that somebody's grass is too high. He goes out to measure it and yes, it is over eighteen inches or sometimes forty-eight inches even. And they're wildflowers, so that doesn't fall under grass.
Okay, right, okay.
So if there's different types of, of natural grasses that would grow in a bayfront area, that's not necessarily meant that it's an unkept, unmaintained property. So those properties would be allowed to have that.
And so further, I mean, if anybody else wanted, go, go take a look.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my recommendation, I took a look.
I did, I've been down there.
You've been down there too, Tim, that's correct.
I'm Darlene Trough, sixteen oh four Beach Boulevard. If you go down the walking path, our house has the big, huge turtle carving. We have the video, there's been, I've seen four turtles lay eggs behind us since we removed the grass that was dead. There's more grass that's dead. All that we want to know is if we can continue to remove the dead grass to the path from behind our house and put more grass in. It's the exact grass from hammocks that matches by the park. The turtles come, they lay their eggs. It makes it easier for people to come when they walk their dogs and pick up the dog's stuff. It's less bugs, it just makes more sense. That's all I want to do, I don't want to plant my favorite flowers, I just want to.
Yeah, alright, I understand.
Plant some grass and make it nice. I won't do anything without permission. I have a little sign that says, don't touch turtle nesting. I'll do whatever you guys want. It's just nicer, it's neater, they're coming, I promise you, I swear to God, they're coming.
As long as, you know.
And then we don't have to worry about mowing and all that stuff.
I just worry about the uniformity that we're going to, the precedent that we're going to set. I mean, the precedent that we're going to set throughout the rest of the town. We're going to let other people not mow the lawn from June.
Well, no, this is actually, it's, it's our property and we're giving these residents the permission to maintain it on our behalf. So you're not going to see that throughout a lot of the other communities on a private piece of property that's violating the ordinance. And it's not like it's not being maintained and we're not looking for it to grow eighteen, twenty inches at all. You're just looking to maintain it and they're putting actual plants.
There won't be anything for you to maintain. The grasses that I purchased for like a hundred and fifty dollars.
I have no.
They're just very low.
They're very low. But, but Patrick Hoyt, who's my landscaper, came over today for another reason. And he was like.
Quiet, please.
And I promise you, if you look at the backyard, and he was like, darling, I love this. And then he commented on the root system, how good it would be for the turtles. He's grown up here. But they stay small, it's neat.
No, I, I was concerned about uniformity too. Well, Veronica explained it, that these residents would be essentially taking care of some of our township property because I shared that concern as Committeeman McDonald and Dykoff, I believe, were concerned about uniformity and setting a precedent.
I would tell you, have a good look at it now, it's very small.
It, it, I didn't, I, I'd forgotten that it's our property, so we get pretty much. We can say what we want. This isn't, this isn't, this isn't like I can just say, you know what, I'm not going to mow my property from May first through October fifteenth. It's not that.
That's good. Now it was explained, I'm on board.
Right, okay.
We would be willing to pay our own pocket to put more of those grasses in that matchments at the park, all the way to the path. Not my favorite flowers, the grasses like I have.
Yeah.
And maintain it, take out the weeds by hand ourselves.
Alright, so we're good?
We're good, we're good.
Okay, alright. Motion to adjourn, correct?
No, we got to go to the township meeting.
I know, it's a motion.
We need to adjourn this one first.
We need to adjourn caucus.
Move it.
Can I have a, alright.
Well, it's either now or later we do that.
What's that?
It was either now or later we do that.
Okay, whatever.
You go put your sign up to the, uh.
The typical lawn sign, you know, like.
Please do not cut my grass.
Yeah, the typical ones that you see, like, you know, that, like, I'm going to say political size signs, those lawn signs, yeah. Right, ready to go to township?
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I got the motion to adjourn.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
You're all set, you can leave.
Please.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice of advertising, as marked press, and a beacon that was posted on the billboard showing the time and place of the meeting. Everyone, please rise and speak your flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one, second reading of ordinance twenty twenty twenty-four, amending chapter three thirty-five for the age restricted planned unit residential development zone.
In order to township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter three thirty-five, the township code of the township of Lacey in town zoning so as to amend section three thirty-five fifty-seven point one D eight A three B entitled Age Restricted Planned Unit Residential Development Zone bulk requirements. There are some applications pending before our building department related to permanent generators in the age restricted development of sea breeze at Lacey. Based on their current zoning, they would need to each go and get a variance in order to connect a generator to their property. So what we did was we put it in as a bulk requirement so that it's an approved use with regards to the setbacks. So we're just making it an easier process. Can I have a second reading, open the floor?
For the public?
Second reading, open the floor.
This is on this ordinance only?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, on this ordinance only. Any comments about this ordinance?
Seeing not motion to close the floor?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Seconds.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two fifty-four, accepting retirement of an employee.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, accepting the retirement of municipal employee. Our municipal court administrator is retiring as of December thirty-first of twenty twenty. She has put in thirty-six years and nine months with us.
Is that longer than you?
No, not yet. I'm trying to beat out Chief Darby.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two fifty-five, appointing Lisa Tatum as municipal court administrator.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, appointing Lisa Tatum as municipal court administrator for the township of Lacey. Lisa is currently serving as our deputy court administrator. She's probably been with us thirty-four, thirty-five years as well already. So it was a natural progression to move her up to the next position. Motion?
Move it.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two fifty-six, reappointing Tricia Greco as tax collector.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, reappointing Tricia Greco as the tax collector for the township of Lacey. The appointment for a tax collector is a four-year appointment and the next appointment is also a four-year appointment. This is renewing her second term for January first of twenty twenty-one.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two fifty-seven, authorizing a leave of absence.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, authorizing a leave of absence for Scott Corrigan under the Family Medical Leave Act.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, is this right? Resolution twenty twenty two fifty-seven A, supporting the call on increase for social security?
Yeah, I double numbered resolutions, so. Resolution township of Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, supporting increasing the cost of living allowance for social security during the pandemic.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two fifty-eight, opposing the state's cut of the Garden State Preservation Trust Fund Act.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, opposing state of New Jersey's cut of the pilot payments under the Garden State Preservation Trust Fund Act after municipal tax rates have been set. We were notified back early in, right before the pandemic with regards to our state aid numbers. And lo and behold, this year, they finally granted us an increase in the Garden State Trust Fund, which are properties that are owned by the state of New Jersey that are here in Lacey Township. They pay us a pilot program price. It was an increase of ninety-six thousand dollars. Lo and behold, October first, we were notified, so you plan that in your budget as additional revenue or to offset costs. Lo and behold, on October first, the governor's announced that he was taking that away from us. So now we have a ninety-six thousand dollar gap in our budget this year after we've already planted with it in there. Motion?
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two fifty-nine, authorizing a special item of revenue in the budget.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item, item of revenue in appropriation in the twenty twenty municipal budget of the township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight point four dash eighty-seven. We get funds from the U.S. Department of Justice for the bulletproof vest grant program and we are receiving twelve hundred dollars and it strictly has to be used for the replacement of bulletproof vests, which do have an expiration date on them, so we do change them out as we need to.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two sixty, authorizing a special item of revenue in the budget.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in appropriation in the twenty twenty municipal budget of the township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA forty-eight point four dash eighty-seven. We are involved in, on our even years, the community development block grant, which is run by the Ocean County Department of Planning. We are receiving thirty-four thousand dollars, which goes towards low-income housing rehabilitation, doors, windows, HVAC roofing and stuff like that for low-income families that qualify for those kind of upgrades to their houses.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two sixty-one, authorizing a transfer of appropriations in twenty twenty budget.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, authorizing a transfer of appropriations in accordance with the provisions of NJSA forty-eight point four dash fifty-eight. Unfortunately, COVID saw a very large increase in our tonnage fees for garbage this year. So we did, yes, so we need to transfer a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
All those honey do lists.
Into, yes, everybody's honey do list, into our landfill solid waste and disposal of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars was, is the shortfall. No, you can't.
Ninety-six to eighty-six.
Can you give a motion? Thank you.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana? Mayor Kennes.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty two sixty-two, authorizing cancellation of taxes due to a disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, authorizing a tax collector to cancel twenty twenty taxes due on a property granted for one hundred percent disabled veteran's exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. This is on block ten twenty-four point oh five, lot four, and block fourteen hundred, lot ninety-one point oh three.
Move it, second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, resolution twenty twenty two sixty, please authorize the placement of a lien on block eight seventeen, lot six for property maintenance.
Resolution township Lacey County, Russia State, New Jersey, accepting certification of the Director of Public Works concerning cost incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at nine fourteen Laurel Boulevard and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costing amount of seventy dollars and seventy-five cents.
Move it, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
I just have a comment.
Yep.
Isn't it great, we're only seeing one?
This time, usually in the summer we get really busy.
It's all the homes that are being sold.
Yeah.
And people moving in. And people moving in.
But we made up for it on the garbage because.
And that's it.
People fixing their houses.
Fixing it all up.
Their homes.
Yes, normally there's a lot.
I remember at one time we used to have five or six.
Yeah, yeah.
That is correct.
Resolution 2020 to 64, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution, Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposit monies held for the use of municipal facilities. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, Resolution 2020 to 65, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution, Township Lacey County, Ocean State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $6,415,364.04.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mayor Kennes.
Yes, monthly reports.
All right, for the month of, the month of September, the municipal court receipts came in at $11,567.39. So that's the better one where we initially had been. And the municipal clerk's office for the month of October collected receipts in the amount of $5,368.85. And for the month of September, road opening permits were collected in the amount of $1,215. Recycling commodity in the amount of $965, and truck parking in the amount of $3,150. Motion to accept the reports is ready.
Move it. Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve township meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2020?
Move it. Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of October 22nd, 2020?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve rapid license application for the women's club of Lacey and the corporate of Fire Company?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commiss, the way I understand, Commissar Community Deputy Mayor Curatolo?
Yes, sir. Thank you, mayor. One of, one of the items that we approved this evening was a symbolic resolution to go from 1.9% to 3% for our seniors. I'll touch on our businesses in a minute, but our seniors are up against it. I applaud the Board of Chosen Freeholders for doing that as well at their last meeting. Coming from a public health background, I could tell you that there's a lot of isolation situations with seniors. There's seniors that are afraid to go out for their medical testing, there's seniors that are afraid to go see their primary care provider. They're up against it, and they're on fixed incomes, so. You know, it's completely apolitical for someone to say that they want to help our seniors. So I applaud my colleagues for, for doing that. I know we put something out on Lacey Township Facebook to have local support and to try to sway some opinion at this level and at the county level as well. Talked about our businesses. Last week, I was at a dinner for Central Ocean Business Association, COBA. Obviously, it was lightly attended, and there was, really, everyone was, you know, observing social distancing. But like I said, our businesses are up against it as well. And everything that you try to do in a town comes from irritable. Everyone has a project, a concern, whether it's environmental, has to do with human, has to do with security, has to do with public health, has to do with purchasing of equipment, capital purchase. Those funds are derived from our businesses. If charity doesn't start at home and we don't support our businesses, the whole thing goes to hell. So I've disagreed openly, but respectfully, with Governor Murphy. The thought that someone could get COVID at 9:59 and not at 10:00 a.m. is somehow, you know, like I said, coming from a public health background, it escapes me. And I think it really shortchanges the amount of brain power that's in this room right now, in this room tonight. I always say, if we put somebody on the moon 52 years ago, we could open a deli on Lacey Road. Right? And if we don't start figuring out how and not just saying we can't because, it's going to be a long, sad, and scary road for everybody in this town, everybody in this state, and, and other states. So I'm hopeful that that changes. I'll ask our administrator, New Jersey Economic Development Authority, if you have a business with 100 people or less, you'll get a 25% break on personal protective equipment. That's something that just came down from Trenton the other day. I was in receipt of that paperwork. I meant to send it to Veronica. I didn't. I will. She may be in receipt of it already. And that came from business, industry, and tourism in Ocean County. I serve on that board. I want to say thank you to our vets. We had a very small and quick ceremony at Bicentennial Park the other day. Those folks are the salt of the earth. If you're a vet or you're active-duty military, please call Veronica, call me on my cell phone, join. We meet at the rec building, and we let everyone know by email. We keep everyone informed. It's not just the camaraderie. It is, you know, we have callouts, there's events in Tom's River. We held an event at the Elks pre-COVID, helping people to get their benefits, transition them to information for medical appointments, VA issues, things like that. Blue water versus brown water. When you talk about Navy veterans, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of benefit that can be derived from it. I'll close, mayor, tonight with an update from our recreation department. We're on liaison. The Undeadly Trail saw 350 cars, an estimated 1,400 people, was at no cost to the taxpayer. We ended up with about 70 different volunteers that acted in that tonight. Escapade, it was really well-attended, and drew about $2,600. It paid for all the bills and the pizza for the folks. Again, it was drive-through, so it was COVID-safe. Another first in this town, just like the Whippet. Applaud our recreation department, our DPW, that got it all together. Because we had heavy rain beforehand, I don't know how they did it. They worked magic. There was no mud. It was good. And thanks again to all the vets. Thanks, mayor.
I understand they're nominating you for, for a great acting job.
It's the Academy Award.
I didn't have any work. I didn't see any pictures on the website of you.
I, no.
I liked, I liked to see that.
Listen, I was the COVID virus. I looked like a gang member in a purple and black jacket with these. We all saw what the COVID virus looks like, little spikes.
Are you the cause for all this nonsense?
I hope not. I didn't know how it would be received. It seemed to, I asked James to monitor some of the social media. It was only good. But I made sure I had my, my mask on when everybody was taking pictures, so I have deniability. Really, it may not have been me, but thank you. It was just great fun. I hope we do it again next year, COVID or not. God willing, there won't be. Loved it. And I want to say, mate, all the young kids, the people, the moms, everybody that made sandwiches, thank you. Thank you. It was something for these kids during Halloween, when Halloween was almost extinct. So thank you. Thanks, mayor.
Thank you, mayor. I would like to congratulate, again, Sergeant Mike Vernway and his family. Well deserved. It's great to see people within any organization move up, and he's well deserved. I know today there was some talk, you know, Governor Murphy trying to, he's changing rules every day, I guess. I get it, and even in my company where I work, you know, we get different things sent to us because it's regulations to have to do with, you know, hitting the restaurant and the bar industry totally. And trying to put a real hurting on them, which is, this time, it could put a lot of them out of business. So as I said before, please solicit, go to as many small businesses as you can to help them out because they're really, really hurting. And now with his changes, I believe today, I heard a little bit before I left my office, that he's trying to change. And Veronica, you sent it through an email about, I think, probably, I don't know how everybody else feels, I think it's a good idea. What do you think?
About letting them stay open longer?
You'd be sarcastic. Oh, no. About the 8 o'clock?
I was sitting there going, wait a minute.
No, about, I, I think we, I think each town should have its own authority to do.
That's what he did today. He's authorizing that the towns can have their own authority over nonessential businesses. We can limit their hours of operation, which obviously none of us think.
What do you think, Mark?
Oh, yeah.
I would be smart. What that could do to a business, and I'm just saying, you know, he, he attacked the bar business because of the crowds, and I understand that. But, you know, to let somebody close at that time, at 10 o'clock, that's when some of them start going. And, you know, I think we've learned a lot over this time of COVID, how we can be responsible. I can't talk with that mask on. That's why I have it off right now. So there's a lot of things we've learned, and I've been going around seeing people that are social distancing on their own, they're wearing masks on their own. So I think maybe we should, maybe think that, you know, whoever might take the credit for it, we're learning. So I think that's, that's a great thing. So I'll leave it at that. You know, the holidays are coming. Happy Thanksgiving. I think we'll be here one more time before Thanksgiving. Anyway, enjoy your family, and like I said before, thank you to the police department, Public Works, all the volunteer. As you see, if you go around Lacey Township, you see what they do in every organization. And including, you know, I have to bring up and I don't, you know, everybody that works within this township, in this building, make everything the way it is. And so do the five of us up here. And so many decisions are made to the best of ability, and that's a great thing. So I want to thank you, mayor, for my time.
Thank you. Commissioner Dykoff?
I want to echo Nick, you know, what he's talking about was Veronica sent out this email. And I laughed at first, and then I, I just shook my head. You know, it basically, it's earlier today, Governor Murphy announced he plans to enact an executive order that provides counties and municipalities with the option to regulate operating hours of non-essential businesses after 8:00 p.m. Well, that would be good, because if he says that, we can do that, maybe we can let them stay open until 11:00 or 12:00 or 1:00 or 2:00. Now, not that I'm a fan of his, but at least in New York, Governor Cuomo has zones. Now, he's treating us, and not to pick on Newark, but of course Newark, they have a 90% positive rate. You know, it's the city. It's different, just like Manhattan. How do you treat Falcon River, you know, like, and I hate to say like Tom's River, but certainly not the inner city. So it's interesting, and we happened to be in the company of Senator President Sweeney a while back, and he said he's a figures guy. Well, okay, well, you know, don't take a broad spectrum, figure. I want to thank Mr. Dasty for coming here and explaining that. There are a lot of questions, but at the end of the day, all we want to ensure, and all we've always wanted to ensure, is that Oyster Creek is decommissioned safely and as quickly as possible. So even, but even though we're in a lawsuit with them, we keep the lines of communication open. And Mr. Dasty had mentioned that I was in his company at his office during a conference call. And I was, and I hope I'm not stepping out of bounds, I was kind of chastised for keeping the lines of communication open. I still communicate with members of Holtech on issues pertaining to the power plant. Not our planning board approval, but on broader spectrum issues. And, and as I mentioned before, I had, we had reached out to Dr. Singh, who's the owner, to set up a meeting. And, yeah, well, we discuss, you know, what's going on. Well, we still want to discuss the future. You know, what are their future plans? It changes. You know, this is an ever-evolving situation with, with the way the, the rules and regulations change, with how they're going to proceed as far as hopefully redeveloping it, hopefully what happens to the spent fuel. You know, Holtech is in the process of getting an interim storage facility permit to move the spent fuel to another site in, in New Mexico or Texas. How successful is that? I know there's a lot of resistance to that. You know, we just want to get as much information as possible, and that's why I will continue regardless of any lawsuits to urge this committee to, to reach out to them and communicate. And if they don't want to communicate, well, that's shame on them. But not going to change the way we are. I've always done it, whether it was Holtech, whether it was Exelon, whether it was Amagen before them. I always did what I could to, to reach out to them and educate myself and, and in, in relation to educate the rest of the committee. I want to congratulate Mr. Juliana on a, on a fantastic win and reelection. I look forward to working with you, at least for another year, hopefully. And I want to congratulate Mr. Stimmel for, for running a very nice campaign. I want to congratulate the school board members who ran. I want to congratulate Mrs. Claus and Mr. Bellino. I knew it was a big, Mr. Bellino, on winning. And I want to congratulate the other, other members. Running for office seemed like a good idea at the time sometimes, and then it kind of, what did I do? But so, again, congratulations to them all, and I know everyone does it for the right reason. To, to help the township, to make it a great town. It is a great town. We had Veterans Day yesterday. I participated in a food distribution in, where I work in Burke County Township with Fulfill. And I had mentioned I was with a former Lieutenant Governor Kim Gudano, who was a CEO or CFO or the head of Fulfill. And they're doing a great job, and they're formerly the Food Bank of Monmouth and Ocean County, and they do a great job. So if you see that, and you can, this difficult time of the year is coming up. Yes, we are, okay, difficult time of the year coming up for everybody. And this year, even more difficult than, than ever before. There are a lot of needy people, so keep them in your, in your thoughts and help them out. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I thought I mentioned it, but thank God Veronica reminded me. We are going out to Holtech, because we did reach out to them for a meeting on November 20th. Me, myself, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Dasty, our, Mr. Brady, our, our planning board attorney. Veronica, it's Chris Reed.
I think Mr. Reed.
Mr. Reed, our Director of Community Development, and, and Ms. Larray. And, you know, again, we're going to communicate. We're going to, you know, we're going to, and we want to maintain the, the lines of communication. And, and listen, whether they like it or not, we're here. And I think I said enough tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Commissioner McDonald?
Yeah, I'm going to pick up where Mark left off on this Holtech thing. Whether we like it or not, they're here. They're in this town. They are huge. They are critical to this, to this township, and we have to deal with them. And I've always believed I will sit down with my worst enemy and try to talk things, get things through. The last place we want to be is in court, because that gets expensive very, very quickly. However, that doesn't mean we're going to roll over and play dead. And as you can see, we got three different court cases going on. We're not rolling over and playing dead with Holtech. But we're going to go out there and talk to them about, not only, we're going to talk to them about the future. Okay? Because there's not a whole lot that we can do about most of these lawsuits at this point in time, though we can talk to them about some of them. And I think that's extremely important, is that there's lines of communication with Holtech remain open regardless of what's going on. Whether they're mad at us, we're mad at them, we got to stay in contact. We got to stay, key lines of communication have to stay open. I want to congratulate Nick on a 70%, 70%. That's outstanding, Nick. Fantastic job. And look forward to working with you, like Mark said, at least one more year, and hopefully for many years after that. Lacy and Lights is back up and running. Going to be a little different this year because we can't put you on the bus and run you around town, obviously, for, because Pete's COVID. So we have to, you got to do it on their own. And I, we'll get Jim in here before, maybe for the next meeting, to explain how Lacy and Lights is going, going to, going to work for that. It's been very successful. Every year, it's grown, and it's grown, and it's grown, so we'll get that. The Christmas parade is what, December?
December 6.
December 6. Well, so last year, poor, you wore that ridiculous hat.
I have a new hat.
Okay. So we're doing that, and I just found this in my mailbox, the, and get ready for it, the plastic bag legislation. And I'm reading this thing and going, are you kidding me? I don't, you know, obviously, we're going to have to follow it, but again, it's, it's, it's another, it's another big, big, big government thing. Oh, yeah, let's talk about it. I know we all drive on Lacey Road, and there's a Dunkin' Donuts on Lacey Road. And if you're coming towards Parkway on Lacey Road, you can pull right in. However, if you're going towards Route 9, you're not allowed to make that left-hand turn. Okay? And no matter how many times the county puts the cones up, the cones get knocked down. So we're going to start, I talked to the chief about it this morning, because as I, coming up this morning, three of them were knocked down. I think they were just put up two days ago.
Yes.
So.
They were all down.
Right. They're all down. So we're going to, we're going to figure out a way to start enforcing that no-left turn there. And also, you're not allowed to make the left-hand turn into the Wawa. But I think that's kind of straightened out a little bit. But the left-hand turn into the Dunkin' Donuts. And I will, we explained that, because I was on the Board of Adjustments real quick. We really had no choice. We wanted to put an exit out the back. However, the neighbors behind us complained because the lights would go right into their, their bay windows. And the other part of that was if we had denied the application, we would have had to buy that land. And it would have cost us about $80,000. So, because there's rules, and Mr. Dasty can explain those rules, because they do get very complicated. So we really had no choice, but we had to let them go in there, and we tried to do the best we can with that. So. I think, oh, this Garden State Preservation, this is, this is, this is a kick in the peters. It really is. Especially during COVID, to promise you $96,000, and then go, whoops. And if you think of how much money he is storing, and this is Governor Murphy, in the state treasurer, from all the money he got from Washington for COVID, and all this other stuff, and he went out and bonded for $4 billion, whatever the heck it was. All that's sitting in there, and he's going to start playing games with this stuff? This is, it's, it's just flat-out wrong. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Tim. I just want to mention the passing of two members of, two residents of Lacey that are really, that were instrumental in the town and volunteered a lot of the time. John Safrance, he was the chief of the Hoover Fire Company, was a life member for 38 years. He volunteered for many other clubs and organizations in the town. And also John Crowell, served on the Central Regional School Board and the Lacey School Board, and was instrumental in bringing the high school to Lacey Township. Both those individuals, you know, dedicated a lot of their time to Lacey Township. And they're actually what makes, they're the type of people that make Lacey Township, you know, sort of a small-town. I want to congratulate Nick for his win, along with his two school board members, Frank Kino and Kim Claus. And as Mark said, I also want to acknowledge all the other candidates that ran for public office. It is extremely difficult to do, especially nowadays when you're being on social media and you're put under a microscope. It is, it is really difficult, and anybody that puts themselves out there and then loses, I just want to acknowledge how difficult it is. I was on a FEMA Zoom call this afternoon. I tend to, anytime the DEP, anything regarding climate change and sea level rise, I try to make myself available for those webinars and updated guidelines. So much of Lacey Township resides underwater, and as I constantly say over and over, it doesn't matter whether, whether I or anybody believes in sea level rise or not. They, when, if the guidelines change, you have to be able to adapt or figure out what you're, you know, what plan you're going to have when they change the guidelines. So I try and keep abreast of all the, all that information as best I can. To mention the plastic bag ban, and again, if you missed it at the beginning, our best practice is, one of these important things that we do is, we, you know, we passed our best practices audit with line colors, and that's important because that, that means we get a full allotment of state aid. So that's a good thing that we have, you know, all our department heads are doing an excellent job to make sure that we're. excellent job to make sure that we're doing, you know, doing everything we can to make sure we get our fair shake from the government. Those are my comments, and now I'll open up to the public, to the public of any questions or comments.
Just immediate.
Name and address.
My name is Barbara Lathrop. I live on Route 9 in West Creek, Eagleswood Township. But I grew up in Lacy Township. I started here in seventh grade.
I remember.
And went up to. There are names here I know, and it's so good to see you. I am heartbroken over John Crowell. I didn't know that. John was a good friend. I negotiated many a contract for the LTEA with John and his wife. Excellent people. I'm still in touch with Mark on Facebook. But anyway, so I can't, you know, I taught here. Mr. Giuliano, I had a Giuliano, but I don't remember first names right now. Sometimes they pass to me.
You had me.
I thought I did.
So was he a rich student or a bad student?
Yeah, we had a student.
What kind of student was he?
As I remember, he's one of those kids that when he heard his name, he smiled.
Stevie?
That's still true.
Veronica, your brother saved my life, because I had a problem with the shimmy in my car coming to school one day. The only place I could think of was take it to Bobby. And the motor mounts in the Chrysler 94 were put in with rubber, and my motor mounts were disintegrating, and my engine was shifting out of my car. So when he called the school and said, tell Barbara, hang in there, I'm almost done with it, but he saved my life. But I did have a Giuliano, but.
Probably. My son, when was this?
Could be your son.
When did you retire?
I retired 15 years ago, 2005. 2005.
Maybe my son.
Mr. Connors, I'm sitting back there looking at you, and you have your father's eyes. What a wonderful man, what a wonderful man he was. And you can tell why I'm here. It's because of Popcorn Park. I was lucky enough to be a teacher, so I knew Mayor Parker, I knew people on the Board of Education, I knew people on the committee, and met Associated Humane Societies, they wanted to build a retirement place, and I said, oh, heck no. We need animal control, because back in those days, we didn't have any in Ocean County. It was either Mr. and Mrs. Williams who lived up on Lacy Road, or Lacy did open that little SPCA over behind where the police, it's gone now.
We use that as our recreation department now.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we purchased it from them.
Those were the days, you know? But, so there was nothing, no place to go. And luckily, I met with the people who were in charge of Associated Humane Societies. They wanted to build a retirement farm for animals, dogs and cats. And I said, no, you come in here, you're going to be building a shelter. So I talked to my friends that I knew, and I said, listen, sell them some land. We bought six acres out there, and Popcorn Park was established. We kept, we had contacted with the town for 35 years, and obviously, my love of teaching was great, and my love of animals, and what we do at Associated Humane Societies is even greater. Because I know when a dog or a cat or wildlife go in there with some physical ailment or some problem, like a white shepherd that I found down in Little Egg, the police called, they thought it had rabies, and somebody had hit it and had it with a rake, so that some of the puncture wounds even went to the brain. I knew that dog when we put it to sleep. I knew that dog was going to get everything he needed to go ahead. Our bids are due tomorrow, I think by 4:00, and it will be in. I'm just asking you to think about, you know, the things we have done and what we do. We are all-inclusive. You get one bill, one payment each, I guess each month, or you get the bill for the year. There's nothing added. We don't charge you for our people going out at night, we don't charge you for our wildlife. We do wildlife all over the state. When Sandy hit, our trucks were going down to Little Egg, any town that needed cages and crates for their residents, because they were going to shelters, because Sandy was, you know, so bad. We don't charge for the 27, I think it was 27, John's here, he's the manager of Popcorn Park. What swans? People didn't realize that all of that pollution went up in the creeks, in the waterways, and the swans were drinking oil and this, and they were getting very sick. So we had, I noticed we had one time, John, but we had 27 swans. We do, we don't stop if it's an animal in trouble. Very often, John was just up in, getting a hawk the other day from, I think in Bricktown at Tom's River. But we provide, that's the kind of service we provide. We also do TNR, and just from the people I know that live, because I have family in Lacy, and I have friends in Lacy. You have, you have a feral cat problem in this town. Well-meaning citizens will feed cats because they feel bad for them. I do it. I have a colony down in West Creek. And the good thing about colonies, we started out about 10 years ago with eight cats, we're down to three. They're spayed, they're neutered, they're vaccinated, so you have that kind of control. They can live their lives, but they're not going to cause any problem because they're not breeding. Talk to the Township Committee, talk to the people in Barnegat, or where a town where we have, we do service those towns. There's no feral cat problem anymore. In West Creek, where I live, there's no, our one driver, Maria, she can look at a cat and say, that's a new cat in town. She knows our animals. She's on the road all the time, and she's very good with cats. So when you're considering, and I know the Board Health, I believe, is involved in it also, when you're considering it, just remember, we're all-inclusive, we are not all apart, we don't charge you extra because our guy goes out on Sunday night or whatever. They're always available. And we'd love to get back into Lacy. We're here, we're here. Your schools come here, everybody's schools come here. Be totally out of the Popcorn Park. It's good seeing you. Do you know, I hate to do this, do you know any arrangements for John?
What?
Arrangements for John Crowell?
Twenty.
There weren't any, yeah, the family.
Yeah, no, they're working.
Yeah. I, great man, good man.
His daughter's a teacher in our schools, I think.
I wouldn't be surprised. I had Leah.
I think Leah's a teacher in our schools, yeah.
Yeah. One day I called her Leah, and she said, my name is Leah. I said, oh, okay.
Yes.
Never did that again. But anyway, and yeah, Mr. Kenneth, you were a good student. I think there are other people might want to talk about some things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Me too.
Name and address.
I'm Donnie Reynolds. I'm the founder of the Friends of the Southern Ocean County Animal Shelter. I am from Barnegat Light, so I'm not native citizens, but I, there are people here from Lacy who can give you more information. But I am here just as the, coming from the Southern Ocean County Shelter. I can tell you that you do have a big cat problem here. And you have to remember, these cats did not choose this life. They are here because the residents have abandoned them, they've become lost, people jumped them. And then, of course, there are all the kittens that are born to these cats that are out there. And the best solution to this is the trap neuter return program, which is used worldwide. It actually started in Italy. And you're always going to have cats, but you're going to have less cats if they're spayed and neutered and not reproducing. And you have more stray cats than I think any of the other town in Southern Ocean County. And we see that from the telephone calls that we get. We help a lot of people, and we have people give you statistics. But we get calls all the time from Lacy Township, far more than from anyplace else, because people, as Barbara Lathrop said, people feel sorry for the cats that are out in their yard. And fortunately, they feed them. They don't, then they have another problem of sick cats, and people get cats going in people's garbage and everything. But it's, is important to spay and neuter them so they're not reproducing. And with this program, people will call us and ask us to come trap their cat, get spayed, neutered, it gets, you know, as all programs do, they get their shots for distemper, for rabies, their ear tips, and their microchips, and they come back to the person who was feeding them, who is usually happy to go on feeding them as long as they're not going to have more kittens. But it truly is the best way to do this, because people call us because they know we're going to take care of the cat, they'll get it back. If they call animal control, the cat will get trapped, it will go to the shelter, it will sit in a little cage for the last week of its life, scared to death, jammed into a room, waiting to die. Because the New Jersey does have a very good law in that anything that comes into a shelter has to stay there for a week so that someone can reclaim it. But of course, no one's going to reclaim these cats, so they just sit there, and then they get killed. The alternative is that they can be in the TNR program, and they can be returned to someone's yard. They take care of them. They're not long-lived, because it is a brutally cold area often in the wintertime. But it's the humane way, which most people love animals, few people don't, but, you know, most people want to see the animals taken care of. So I thank you for your attention, even though I don't live here. And just to thank you.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address.
Hi, Jennifer Shaw, 1338 Lewin River. I'm not going to repeat everything she said, but I'm here to support these women and everyone in these organizations with friends and with animal control. And since, I mean, this is my, she was.
I just helped her. I am with animal birth control, and we provide local spay and neuter to all of Ocean County cats. And I just helped her. There were, there was a mom and four kittens in her yard. I said, John, you need to trap this cat so that she doesn't have more kittens. And so we did that. And then I said, look, you saw another cat in your yard, put the trap out, put the trap out. So actually, through friends, we were able to spay these cats at no cost. They were very, very nice and provided even the money to do that. And now, several of those kitties come to our, as a matter of fact, she's thinking of adopting one. And the other one, they have the two brothers, they come occasionally too. But TNR, I'm from Manchester, I live in Manchester now. Manchester has a TNR program that is very, very successful. And I always helped Barbara around animal control, transporting cats to the state clinic, et cetera, picking them up, rehabbing them, and helping to release them. It's, it's a lot of work on my part, but I love doing it, because I think every cat, whether it's a male or female, the males will no longer fight, you won't be hearing screaming in your backyard. Females will no longer have kittens, and it's not going to go on and on. I hear some, some people say, oh, just don't feed them, they'll go away. Well, they're going to go to somebody else's yard, go to somebody else's yard. TNR is like the only program that's going to solve this problem, because it will be less and less. I mean, I must have transported them, at least a thousand cats already. And in Lacy Township, I guess many, many, many.
Could I, could I, real quick, I don't mean to interrupt you. For people that don't know, TNR is trap, neuter, and release.
Right.
It's a program of.
Trap, neuter, release.
Animal birth control.
And all fixed, and generally, people are very happy, because what they, so many people do, they can't afford it, they will call when they have like eight cats in their yard. I said, why didn't you wait? When the first cat showed up, you should have called and gotten help. So you wouldn't now be feeding your pets. So I said, well, I can't afford it, I can't afford it. And that's, and that's why we have some of that, because so many people can't afford it, can't afford to do it.
And we should tonight to advocate to get Popcorn Park.
Yeah, and Popcorn.
Because they have a great program for TNR.
She's been, she has been so helpful, too. I've actually been able to, I've been able to take cats, they have to get them spayed and neutered, and they do it at a very, very low cost. Yeah, Pop, they're just phenomenal. And friends has helped out tremendously, too.
Everybody pulls together.
Yeah, we're all trying to help everybody, you know, Barnegat, weird town, Lacy, Manchester. Windsor is another big area. I know, I can't even talk about that. But I would love it if Lacy Township would consider some age on trap neuter return program. I think it would be very, very beneficial to many people.
And which would be another reason why she said, you know, Popcorn Park already has a well-established program that we actually all use.
Right.
And it's, it's just fabulous. Because you're never going to get a pest control company to do something like that.
No, because in my opinion, I just heard that they pick up a cat that's supposed to be, every cat that's done is input. Everyone knows that cat's spayed. But animal control that we want here on Lacy, they put the cat that was already input and brought it, brought it down to the Southern Ocean County Shelter to be used for us. So we already spent money having the cat spayed, no reason to pick it up. But they brought it down here, and what, it's going to cost like $50 to put that down? I mean, that's, that's, you know, it's.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, that is. A pest control company is not going to care. You know, personally, you know, like Popcorn.
Thank you very much, Mina.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else? Name and address.
Hi, Donna Brower, 2222 John Park Drive, Forkett River. I just wanted to speak also about the trap neuter return program quickly. And I'm a volunteer with Friends of Southern Ocean County Animal Shelter, and I live in Lacy. And so if a resident of Lacy calls us, I'm one of the people, I'm the only one who traps, I think, from Friends that lives in Lacy. And so I'll go out to the resident's house and try to help them. And we do have a big problem with feral cats in Lacy. And I believe that part of the problem, part of the reason why we're having such a big problem, is because we don't have an animal control option that is offered in the TNR. Within the last couple of weeks, I went to the homes of an elderly couple in Forkett River, and they have eight cats or more kittens in their backyard, and they started feeding them when they had two. And they didn't want to call animal control, because they knew that the only option was going to be that the cats would be trapped, taken to the shelter, and put to sleep. They have shelters for the cats, they feed them, they pretty much stay in that resident's yard. And so the problem exploded into where they had eight cats. Two of them were kittens that we took in the, you know, foster, and were getting them fixed and vaccinated and returned. But I think that if we had an animal control option that offered to our residents, that, you know, a more humane treatment and a more humane way to control the population of the feral cats in our town, that they would utilize it more. And that it would be addressed before we had a population of eight or 10 cats at a residence, because they don't want, they don't want to call and just have the cat picked up and put to sleep, or killed in the shelter. So I wanted to ask that you would please consider, in the animal control contract, utilizing that company like Popcorn, too, that would provide a TNR, an effective TNR program. Because while we help with it, we're very few volunteers, and we can't, just the few of us, get the population here under control. But I think that if we had an animal control option that was doing TNR, we could see the numbers of feral cats in our town be reduced and controlled and managed much more effectively. And if it's okay, I'd like to share an article with you about the effectiveness of TNR programs, or if you have other.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This will just be brief.
Name and address.
At the border of Hospital City.
I've had a TNR colony since 2012. It's been very successful. Popcorn Park has been wonderful. I started out with about 12 cats and kittens here and there, and I can say successfully, I'm down to two. So it does work, and they've been wonderful. Maria is someone that you can have a first-name basis, she's like a friend, and she knows her animals very well. And I've been very blessed to have them, so just, you know, that's all I wanted to say. It's a great program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Name and address.
Lisa Tarzia, E26 Spar Drive. I'm also here to advocate for Popcorn Park this evening. I was very happy to hear this committee encouraging town members to patronize our local businesses. I think that's really, if you're afraid to venture out, most restaurants here, Mom and Pops are offering takeout, and I highly recommend that. And on that note, I would like to comment, Popcorn Park has been part of our community for so very long. They're invested in our community. Why are not we supporting them as a local nonprofit organization? Technically, a nonprofit business, right? They're very invested in this community, they help out residents, even non-residents. And because they are a rescue and a shelter, and again, a nonprofit organization, if their costs to our community are comparable, and they offer very experienced professional services, why aren't we supporting one of our own? Why are we going to a for-profit entity, a business that's for-profit, and a pest control agency? Technically, yes, they're trained, right? They have to go through training. But Popcorn Park is nonprofit, we all love. We all love, well, I speak for myself, maybe my family and relatives and friends who come to visit, the first thing they ask is, "Oh, can we go to Popcorn Park?" And then, of course, then Bamber Lake, and the nursery back there that sells flowers and vegetables, and, you know, these are community businesses and entities. Why are not we supporting Popcorn Park? They do such great work, and they do offer TNVR, spay, neuter at very low prices compared to veterinarians and other organizations that do that. And they do that for residents, even though they are not our ECO. You know, they are doing it not for a profit, and they're doing that for all of us here. And I know my neighbors and I have brought injured wildlife there, and, you know, the staff there is incredible. They offer, they will do triage, and then if that wildlife creature can be saved and rehabbed, they then find a rehabber, and they will take care of that animal. And I know we have so many bigger issues, so huge issues going on right now with COVID and the economy and everything else going on, but, you know, I believe in, from the Bible, all creatures great and small, right? So we can show our humanity and our humanitarianism even in small ways. Let's take care of each other in the community, our most vulnerable here, and let's take care of our local businesses. And why don't we recognize Mr. Bergman for all the work that he's done, and for all of us in the community? And why don't we celebrate that, and why don't we recognize it and support him and all of his staff, and volunteers, and the people in the community with their cats? Incidentally, it wasn't brought up, right now in Shretton, there is legislation being bantered about a program being created, a fund for any municipalities that want to utilize TNVR and spay, neuter, and return to field. They can access, if the legislation passes, they can access those funds to subsidize their budget for these programs. It has been found, if you look up the Humane Society in the United States, the New Jersey chapter advocates for these programs. They have found that they are highly effective in limiting and actually eliminating feral cat colonies. It's more effective. These cats, generally, these populations die out within five to seven years because of the harsh realities of life of any wildlife, be it a squirrel, a possum, a raccoon. These are not pampered pets within the household where they have a 15 to 20-year lifespan. These feral cats that are released back into their habitat generally live for about five to seven years. As one woman just said, her own feral colony in her area was reduced relatively quickly. And they found that it is actually cheaper to invest in TNVR and trap, neuter, release programs than it is to continue capturing these animals, trapping them, bringing them, sheltering them for the required seven days, and then euthanizing. It's actually cheaper and more effective to adopt these programs. And I know that the New Jersey Humane Society and New Jersey chapter of Animal Protection League, these are all agencies within the state that would be very happy to work with any municipality if they have questions about these types of programs, so.
Thanks very much for your coming.
Thank you.
Name and address.
Hi, yes, my name is Sharon Prundergast, and I live at 1809 Ravine Drive. I too support Popcorn Park Zoo, and I just want to say I'm really proud to be a member, citizen of Lacy Township, and I loved hearing the discussions tonight. And it made me feel so good to hear you all talk about how you support our local businesses, and that's exactly why I'm here. And I love that they are a destination place, and they bring people to this town, and it adds customers and business to our small businesses that we wouldn't otherwise have. And I know we've been here a long time tonight, and just a real quick example, my niece was doing her Silver Award for her Girl Scout troop a couple of years ago, and they picked Popcorn Park Zoo, all on their own. I was like so proud. And they came down here, and they came a couple of times to have meetings, and they ran a fundraiser and bought corund events for all the animals there. But while they were coming here, they were coming to our diner, our Lacy diner, and they were enjoying what the town had to offer, and they were providing more revenue to this town, and it made their paper up in North Jersey. So I just wanted to say, I think they're really great to have, and I really hope we consider them and support them as our animal control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
Mr. Bergman, you know me very well. I come out for that Popcorn Park Zoo all the time. I support you, I support you in many different ways, but I could tell you this, I won't tell you how many cats I have, but I've gotten them all from the Popcorn Park Zoo, including my dog. There's many dreams I've done over the period of time, and my wife has this dream that I'm gonna, when I finally retire, I'm going to give her that dream that she wants. She wants to start a facility to house animal, you know, cats and dogs, whether it be 100 acres, whatever she wants. And that's her dream, she wants to do. And I think a lot of it has to do with your organization out there, okay? We come out there all the time, and I could tell you this, she cries when she goes out there, but she's crying for good things because of everything you do out there. So I want to tell you, thank you very much for being part of Lacy Township, I really do.
Yeah, Regina? Name and address.
Regina, the Sands of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I was really hoping DPW could help me out with this, but I called a few weeks ago. There's a lot of rubber hoses still taped to the streets from a previous traffic study, and some are ripped and broken, and one piece was in a storm drain. And now with all the leaves, they gather around these rubber hoses, and the water can't get into the drains.
They belong to the New Jersey Department of Transportation, but a third-party company that they do for traffic counts, and you have, I've contacted them numerous times.
Really?
And they have not done anything to address picking them up.
That's really strange. They took the boxes and they never took the rubber hoses.
Yep, they never picked up the rest of the equipment, you're correct.
And I can't grab them because they're too close to high-traffic areas. And I just pulled the one out of the storm drain, but...
Yeah, it's a continual problem with them when it comes to traffic counts, and I think they don't pick up the rest of the equipment.
They're all over the place, and when they're taped up, and you don't have enough time to rip them off, you'll get hurt, and...
I believe this is something a couple of years ago that you had asked and addressed too, because when they did the Lacy Road and Route 9 counts.
It's been brought up before.
Really messy with the leaves now, and it can get, you know, flooded easily because they're stocked up. All right, I just want to leave you guys a couple copies of these. Robert's room's older. Good reading for you guys. Can you share the two copies?
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Sheen, non-motion to close the floor.
Second.
All for favor.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no. Executive session. Resolution number 266, attached with county motion standing, all the rest of the convene executive sessions, matters of personnel, anti-impact litigation, and matters of real estate, contractual matters. Motion? Motion? Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Now, a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.